Thank you, Dr. Goodman, the Board of Education, for this opportunity to celebrate our achievements at the middle school, high school, and our proposal going forward. Tonight, I will get to share our recent most recent modernization and exciting new facilities. Dr. Keough will share the ways our strategic pillar of contemporary teachers and teaching and learning has been advanced this past year and how the current proposal will continue to move us forward. Dr. Sweeney will also dive on special ed. Mr. Colaswano will celebrate our athletes and our scholars, and I'll conclude with celebration of our artists. Moving along, the modernization of our cafeteria. The new middle school, high school cafeteria is a marked improvement to our facility. We first opened the cafeteria in February. We look forward to inviting our community to this new facility very soon. With the funding from the 2021 Mon, our original middle school, half a car, middle school, high school cafeteria was renovated, and students get to enjoy this new, modern, state-of-the-art cafeteria. In the meantime, I assure you, the students are very much enjoying the space. The new facility allows for varied and delicious menus with greater, uh, steam with a great team of food servicers. The furniture is temporary, but even that shows a different arrangement for the groups of, for groups of friends. The big TV screens highlight our students, their achievements, their classes, their work in the arts and athletics. It also includes a positive message board to display to boost our SEL. Thank you to the community, the Board of Education, and all who work to support this new learning environment for our students. Next, our library. We opened our library this past week with tours of every English language arts class. Much like our cafeteria, the library rents a bull, represents a bold, modern step forward for our district. Furniture in our library is flexible, allowing the space to transform based upon the learning needs of our students. Students have the option to sit at tables, to sit in different learning spaces, or they can learn, sit on the learning steps, or in more private learning rooms. Funding for this space allows for the creation of a space that will, an emerging recording studio in the vestibule below. Two teachers were introduced to this space at a recent professional development day, and their excitement was palpable. Requests to reserve the library were immediate. Students are enjoying the new space last week, and the reviews were five star from our students. While the technology is still being installed and some furniture and flourishes are still on the punch list, we can be proud of all that we have accomplished in, in working with the new library. The space will definitely make a big difference today and for decades to come, so thank you. These are just previews of, and they not do justice, these pictures not do justice to this space. You will set, get to see how spectacular the library really is in our upcoming open house. We now turn to Dr. Keough, who will bring you this, the work done in contemporary teaching and learning. Thank you.
Thank you to Dr. Linehan, thank you to Dr. Goodman, Board President and Vice President, and trustees, for the opportunity to share some of the work we've engaged in regarding our contemporary teaching and learning pillar. In order to prepare all students for excellence, we need to employ modern and bold teaching strategies to meet the time. For this presentation, we will focus on the three areas you see here. These are the areas that are woven into the superintendent's budget proposal. So let's begin with science. In accordance with shifts and standards, we are moving toward models of what we like to call ambitious science teaching. It's a comprehensive model of teaching science that involves three distinct areas. First, we have practices. These are practices that scientists engage in as they investigate, build models, and develop theories. The term practices emphasizes that scientific investigations require not only skill, but some basis of specific content knowledge. This requires we think about what we have students do in our classrooms. Meanwhile, cross-cutting concepts have application across all domains of science. These are the recurring themes or topics that link the different domains of science. For example, patterns, cause and effect, scale, and systems. New frameworks emphasize that these concepts be made explicit, leaving nothing to chance rather than, oh, this is like what we did in bio. The goal is that the link is clearly established. Lastly, we have the disciplinary core ideas. These focus K-12 science curriculum instruction and assessment on the most important aspects of science. To be considered core, the idea that we're being, that's being taught should meet at least two, ideally four, of the criteria you see here. Should have a broad importance across multiple sciences or engineering disciplines, provide a key tool for understanding or investigating complex ideas, relate to the interests and life experiences of students, and be teachable and learnable over multiple grades at increasing levels of depth and sophistication. So again, while the assessments and standards obviously identify what's a core idea and what's not, we as instructors want to think about these criteria when we're developing our lessons. The heart of this multi-dimensional approach to science teaching is phenomenon-based science instruction. A phenomenon is defined here, and it could be something that's observed or measured either by a person or by some type of tool. Examples include wolves howling at the moon or a flower blossoming. Previously, these phenomena would have culminated a lesson or a unit. You would have learned about wolf pack behavior, and then you would have seen it in, in action. But here, we want those types of phenomena to drive the instruction. These phenomena should also further the core ideas that help students to understand those concepts of their respective disciplines, such as biology or earth science, and the connections among them. So this mindset has obviously had an impact on the way we plan, teach, and assess. So to achieve this, the Science Department has been hard at work, but luckily, we've been far ahead of some of these shifts. Teachers have provided opportunities for hands-on, minds-on learning activities. You'll see an example later in the presentation, but another one I can think of is the design of bionic arms in Ms. Richter's science class, where they're learning about computers and robots as related to tendons and muscles and nerve endings. Two of the teachers on our Science Department are among the New York State master teachers, leading the charge statewide in advancing these standards and instructional practices. Dr. Mosher has worked with all our departments on formative assessment and data collection, and has worked particularly with science. We've also begun discussions about the science sequence, particularly the options of acceleration in the middle school. We reviewed local offerings at nearby districts, and next year, a study group will convene about whether or not it should be earth science or living environment that's offered to our eighth graders. A shift like this would have implications for a couple of years related to staffing and curriculum, so it's a shift that we want to make sure that we're entering comprehensively. Additionally, as we return to the New York State learning standards, Ms. Buchanan, one of our science teachers, engaged in work over the previous summer on standards-based grading. She launched a pilot with A Kindy, it's that logo there in the corner of the slide, to help her and her students assess their mastery of the different science standards. In the next slide, she will discuss this work.
Completely different, right? Right now, we have numbers that apply to letter grades. So right now, if I, if a student says, you know, I have a 90, that really means nothing to them other than I have a 90%, and now I'm going to be on the principal's list, which is wonderful, but that doesn't really tell them the measurement of their success in my classroom, and it doesn't necessarily transfer to their success on the regions as well. In my classroom, I'm moving towards standards-based grading, which is a way for me to assess students on their abilities to succeed in my classroom outside of just merely assigning arbitrary number to what they know. So I have the ability with standards-based grading to say whether or not student has mastered a particular standard in essence. And, uh, but it also gives me the ability to assess students individually and to, um, have students be able to go back and do more material learning in order to master that particular standard. So A Kindy is a program that allows me, right now, what I'm trying to do is all of my questions are aligned to a particular standard within the chemistry curriculum assigned by the state. And with A Kindy, I can go and see how many kids have actually mastered a particular standard based on the assigned standard. And, um, Kindy also tells me if, um, you know, more than half of the students have missed a particular question, and that tells me as a teacher that I really need to revisit that question because I did not teach it appropriately, it wasn't, they didn't understand the question, or there's something wrong with the grading. So that's how I'm using it now. Well, Dr. Mosher is proficient in, in how to put together, you know, um, different materials for the students and me, so she's helped develop, um, a Google Doc that students fill in after every exam. So I assign the standards, they have to go through and say whether or not they've gotten one, two, three, or four correct of that standard, and then I can use and analyze that and say, okay, well, you've got four of this particular standard correct, this is a mastery in that particular area. So the New York State's, uh, science standards are phenomenon-based, and they, um, the standards are completely different than the way that they're listed now, and the only way for students to really, for us to gauge whether or not they've mastered it is whether or not we're actually looking at the standards as opposed to just assigning a grade. But I, I find that A Kindy is very helpful for me as a teacher to really, you know, analyze the data that I use. I particularly really like data, but I really like the fact that students, if, if I keep pushing this direction, that students really can take ownership over that grades.
So we were able to wrangle a no-fee pilot of, of A Kindy, but you'll see that it's reflected in next year's budget so that we can continue with it. Moving to ELA, our team of ELA teachers in the high school have been focused on inquiry-based curriculum design, while teachers in our middle school have been exploring ways to use data provided by benchmarks and progress monitoring to support and challenge our students. There's also been a focus on informational texts. At the high school, we used modules from Brave New Teaching to reflect on our resources, scope, and sequence. This led directly into our work with Lattic, which we'll hear about later, as three of our teachers participated in the summer academy. The department also mapped out resources, audited our units for standards alignment, and we're hosting at the upcoming superintendent's conference day, transition meetings that bridge Cottle with the middle school and middle school with the high school. We've also piloted programs such as No Red Ink and vocabulary.com and launched a cross-content vocabulary initiative this year. So, um, we determined vocabulary to be a focus of ours after a review of some of the data, like iReady, but also by analyzing writing samples. And the department agreed that branching this work out through the assistance of our Writing Revolution coaches, this would have a significant impact on student writing. So we led trainings, we began work with vocabulary.com, and communicated to the middle school, high school staff that in essence, we are all vocabulary teachers. And this included imparting the importance of cross-curricular vocabulary instruction with a focus on academic cross-disciplinary terms. So this might mean, um, for science or math teachers, you're not just focusing on words like molecule or line segment, you would be thinking about how to make sure kids really understand terms like analyze or disaggregate, because those words would have correspondence and connection to other classes. Or spending time to unpack high-level vocabulary like miasma or supposition. We're already beginning to see positive results in some of the student writing samples that we've been looking at. So we provide this slide here to show that our work is driven and monitored by data. At the middle school, we're lucky to have a universal benchmark assessment that allows us to track the progression of students in the window of time since the fall. And we've seen growth in the percentage of students performing above grade level and reduction in the percentage of students performing below grade level, and these are exactly where we want to see those plus and minus signs. Meanwhile, at the high school, we don't have a universal benchmarking system, more on that later, but we do see in our largest metrics, very positive results, whether that is the, uh, passing rate of the English regions, which is the highest in the school of 94.12%, or the mean average of our AP students in English literature and composition with a 4.45, which is almost, which is a point above the New York State average. And we share this to communicate that we're identifying priorities rooted in data and monitoring our progress through the use of these objective assessment measures. So evolving standards continue an emphasis on informational text over literary text, especially as students get older. So we've made a more concerted effort to introduce more informational text into the curriculum. We use Newsela to connect students with differentiated nonfiction articles and to pair fiction and nonfiction texts, and we're already seeing results. On the iReady analysis of comprehension of informational text, we see again positive percentage growth in the areas of, uh, students performing above grade level and reductions as we should in the students performing below grade level. And that's just in informational text. Meanwhile, as you may know, the Writing Revolution provides explicit sentence-level writing instruction. In many ways, this is based in the same brain research that has informed recent shifts in the science of reading. TWR teaches writing and content simultaneously. There's no, all right, everyone, it's time to learn how to write. Those lessons are woven into learning about science, social studies, and even math. It recognizes that writing is a highly complex cognitive process, and wielding that when teaching con, complex concepts has been terrific, and Takahou is actually, is really a leader in this. So as an example, the Writing Revolution leads trainings for teachers throughout, throughout the world. I was part of a virtual training with some of our new teachers, and there were participants from Australia that must have been off, I believe, at like 1:00 AM to be able to participate. There were about three or 400 people on the call, and they were showing exemplars, they showed three different exemplars, and one of them was from their early work with Takahou. It's a Takahou, you know, Takahou schools, and I felt like I saw a celebrity, like, that's us, that's us. I almost unmuted myself, but, um, so Takahou's really led the charge in introducing some of these research-based cognitive approaches to writing. It's provided a great foundation. Currently, our ninth graders are working on a cumulative science research project in which they are implementing writing strategies, skills, and resources from TWR. In ELA, however, as we reach the higher grades, we have seen a need to provide something that allows them to further advance their writing skills. In an analysis of student writing samples, we really wanted to see the use of more advanced structures, uh, tech structures of writing in the higher grades and use with more frequency. So this investigation brought us to No Red Ink. No Red Ink is a high school resource. It's an adaptive writing curriculum provider, which means it responds to the needs of the students and what type of data the teachers are sharing. Its materials align with both state standards as well as the texts that form our curriculum, so our teachers immediately saw connections to the, the materials that they're using. This is a natural next step for TWR. We see No Red Ink, No Red Ink taking students to their next level in the ELA classrooms. Additionally, as I mentioned earlier, the middle school has iReady, which allows us to pinpoint some of those skills and strategies on which we need to focus. iReady does not go into the high school, but No Red Ink does. So at the end of this year, we're also doing a low-cost pilot with them right now. We will assign diagnostics to every student, similar to the way we do with iReady in the middle school, that will allow us to focus our instruction in the coming year as well as monitor our progress throughout the year. Here, Ms. DiArco helps to explain how these resources, vocabulary.com, and No Red Ink help us to further our goals in the areas of writing and reading comprehension.
I am so thrilled that we have No Red Ink. So essentially, we were looking for a program to address higher-level thinking skills and, uh, thinking skills, writing skills, and it was very difficult to find enough practice, it was very difficult to all be on the same page, to collect data on students, and so I started doing some research, my colleagues started doing some research, and we happened upon No Red Ink. We spoke to each other about it, some of our colleagues had used it in a different district, looked into it, um, piloted it on the free program, and decided that this was amazing. We got great feedback from the students and instantaneous data. What No Red Ink does is it continues to test the students, and I say test, I really mean have them practice until they achieve mastery, and gives us multiple modalities. So it's not just being able to choose it in a multiple choice, it's transferring skill into writing. Really is helping us to align curriculum because they have prompts and writing assignments for every single book. So when we're having meetings, we can look at the data, we can talk about the types of assignments that we're giving, there's no guesswork, and we also are able to look at the standards that students are falling short with and the ones that are map, that they're actually mastering, so that we are using our, um, our instructional time more So vocabulary.com is another tool that we've been using, and it really is another, it's very similar to No Red Ink in the fact that it will test students until they achieve mastery, so they have the option to go on and practice and practice and practice a word. What it does is it picks out words and contexts for students that would take us hours upon hours to do. So if you want to switch a new book, if students don't understand the words that are in there, they can go on vocabulary.com, and we're also using that as a tool. So currently, I can give you an example, my students have a test on Tuesday, and they now can go on and practice on vocabulary.com with a practice quiz that I gave them, which is similar to the test that has it in context, in real-world context. So it's not just the book that it appears in, but how it appears in print, newspapers, magazines, other works of literature, so they're seeing it transfer into real-life context. So we're using that. The other thing is that it's cross-curricular, so I know that goes into science, it goes into social studies, and that's really what we want. So oftentimes, words that are used in social studies, we see them used on, in English, and so they're able to see that. So for example, we're using the word ratified, we're looking, we're reading Animal Farm in 10th grade, and that's something that they would have spoken about in social studies, so it kind of transfers over. So they're both amazing programs, and I'm so grateful that the district invested in this, so you're investing in the department, you're investing in the students. So they have SAT vocabulary that frequently comes up, and they can test on that, but No Red Ink also has it broken down by skills, so students can go and if they're taking an ACT, they're taking an SAT, they can go in and they can go, skills that are tested often, skills that are not tested that often, and it customizes the program to what they need to do. So as soon as we got the premium version, I have my students on it immediately playing with it, encouraging them, and giving them assignments. So that definitely helps, and it also, vocabulary.com also provides data, so I know what words students are having trouble with, I know what words that they have mastered, so it just makes me an efficient teacher, and I'm able to better communicate that to my department and to administration.
So yeah, that was one of the things that we saw in the, those low-cost pilots that we've been running with both of these, um, these programs, is that in addition to being a resource for us as, as instructors, um, we saw that there were a lot of test prep materials that could also really help kids that are preparing for, um, for tests like the SAT and ACT. So, uh, the, the programs really serve multiple purposes. Additionally, the superintendent's budget, um, calls for an increase in staffing in the ELA department. This will allow us to have one teacher per grade level in our ELA department, similar to the model at the middle school. This, right now, teachers are divided among grades, making focused curriculum work challenging as teachers are often pulled in different directions during the day. With one teacher per grade level, we can pull together a team much easier to engage in responsive curriculum work as well as make connections for cross-curriculum work. For example, issues in the 10th grade can lead us to examine our scope and sequence in the ninth grade, and with one teacher to pass the baton, the pacing is far more So now we turn to the learner-active-technology-infused classrooms. The, this is really an infusion of structures and philosophy aimed at helping students to take charge of their learning. This is a recurring theme in our work, and at the secondary level, um, I know I, I heard it kind of, um, recurring through the interviews with Ms. Buchanan and Ms. DiArco. It's based, um, in activating a felt need to learn something. Students should really feel a desire to go out and form these really deep understandings relating to the content. And then the teachers are designing space and resources for students to actively construct that knowledge. So whether that is challenging students to solve a crime scene, explaining variations in weather, or conflict mapping out high school social issues that, the, the way you might do a Shakespearean text. The Authentic Learning Unit requires students to schedule, to research, to test, to collaborate, and present, really flipping the traditional model of classroom instruction on its head. So, um, here, I'm just going to speak through, uh, some examples of, um, of the Lattic in action, because when you walk into a Lattic, or a Lattic, I don't know how they, they pronounce the abbreviation, but I can't keep saying those five words. When you walk into a Lattic, it just looks different. So for example, the teacher is actively trying to minimize their time at the front of the classroom. It doesn't mean that they're never in front of the classroom, and there's definitely areas in which lecture makes sense, but they definitely try to reduce that time. There is far more emphasis on students taking ownership of their learning, of students taking charge. So a lot of the conversations the teacher's having with the student isn't to answer questions that are related to content, and is help to drive process. Here, you'll see that students are studying weather conditions and barometric readings in local communities to track changes and examine differences in weather and patterns in Westchester County. This is part of, a really important part of the Lattic, this idea of relevance and authenticity, and that it's something related to what they're doing in the world. You'll also notice that students work in groups, and that there's a lot of movement in, in, in Lattic that, you know, students will get up, will walk over to somewhere else, they'll write down if they have a question, they might collaborate with another group and come back to theirs, so it's a really active environment, as the title says. In the corner, I think it's hard to see in this video, but, uh, there's a station called the Resource Station, and the Resource Stations are really a nice feature of this, uh, learning environment, because it's a repository for all the types of instructional materials that kids may or may not need. So during the summer PD, we used a research, a Resource Station, and when I was working with teachers on how to create websites or how to record podcasts, uh, some teachers needed to know how to do that, some teachers did not. So when I wrote down, you know, the notes on how to do it, I just photocopied them and left those on the Resource Station, so teachers that wanted to do that could go and collect that resource. It allows for the design of a library that's ultimately very differentiated in terms of resources. Kids can contribute to that resource, if a kid, you know, designs a how-to guide or, or notes on how to accomplish something, they can contribute to the Resource Center. You'll also notice, I think we might have missed it, but, um, the contributions of students help to advance the learning for the class. So again, in a typical classroom, teachers provide information and students use it as instructed, but here, based on the student's analysis, they're filling out a chart based on the different towns that their groups have been assigned, so that they can then track those, um, changes as a whole. Students are actively constructing that information, and, and here, this is a great example, because it's a topic as dense and challenging as, as earth science, no less. So I'd also like to show you an example of the product of an authentic learning unit, and, uh, this is a really cool example, because I don't know if the board remembers, but last year, we shared an example from Ms. Privates' entrepreneurship class, where students shared prototypes of a design they were creating. And this summer, we talked about that unit in particular, and ways that we could, uh, add some rigor and some relevance to that based on the models of, uh, the concepts of the IDE. And I know some of you have read about this in our happenings, but in this revised task statement, students weren't just asked to design a product, they were focused on a particular corner of the market, kids' toys, and used actual market research conducted down at the William E. Cottle Elementary School. We had a connection, so we, you know, connected them. The video here shows some examples of their market.
All right, so welcome to our entrepreneurship showcase. So does anyone know by raising their hand, what is an entrepreneur? Yeah, you're absolutely right, so it's someone who makes things, and it too, the research their target audience, which in this case is all of you. So you completed that Google form for us about your interests, and we took that data and we created products we thought that you would enjoy. So has anyone ever made anything in art class or in steam class? Takes a long time, right? Because we have to brainstorm, and we have to design and create, and then you may notice that some of the entrepreneurs will walk around with their products so that you can see a closer look. So now I'm going to introduce our first group of entrepreneurs for animal color race bike.
We wanted to create a fun and energetic experience that featured the right amount of competitive nature. One of the reasons that we created a race is because it provides equal opportunity for all the players. In addition, we loved incorporating bright colors since it made the game more aesthetically pleasing and exciting.
This is the print dab man, is also over there. We used one of the teachers at our school, and we said, uh, no boredom in our game, and then like this is a player, uh, senior who's on the football team.
John Wayne.
Yeah, John Wayne. We said that this is his favorite game.
You, so we made a dice, and you roll, so you start here, and you pick like one of these things that we made, but there's also on the way to the finish line, there's like pick a card places, so you pick one of these cards, and it's like go back three, go forward three.
Hello, fourth graders. My name's Amanda Schrally, I'm in the 10th grade, and I'd like to introduce you to backpack mysteries. So first, I'd like to start, start off with my origin story. I saw that 97.5% of you either loved or liked mystery boxes or surprises, so that's how I decided to be, do backpack mysteries. I remember when I was in the fourth grade, me and my classmates used to have a bunch of competitions to see who could have the most backpack keychains, or the most keychains on their backpack. So I wanted to bring that tradition back to Cottle, so that's why I've created these products for you.
Matthew, if you could show them all the possible ones they could get with this edition. There's a leaf, a snowflake, a seashell, and a rose.
Thank you for listening, are there any questions?
Good morning, fourth grade Cottle students. Today, I'm with Jamir and Joey, and we'll be presenting our product, Board Masters.
So Board Masters is just like regular chess with a unique twist. As you could see, each piece is custom designed, and, uh, so it has a fun spin as opposed to regular chess, which is kind of boring.
Here we got, this is the how-to guide, basically, teaches you about all the individual pieces, all the special moves, so for new users, just make sure you look at this, and you'll be a true master of the board.
Here is our origin. The origin of Board Masters comes from three high school students who want to make a change in the youth chess community. Jamir, Sal, and Joey. Jamir, Sal, and Joey, which is us, came together to release such a product that would change the mindset of young children aspiring to learn chess.
Hi guys, my name is Maria Rodriguez. I'm a 15-year-old entrepreneur, and this is my game, Mystery Mania. Do any of you guys like to watch like, TV shows like Inspector Gadget, Scooby Doo, or Alana Holmes from Netflix? These are pictures from the actual game. This includes a evidence file that has information within. This is a commercial ad I made for you.
Hey detective, we need you. There's been a robbery of a stolen diamond donut in the Tuckahoe Museum, and we need your help. Mystery Mania provides all of the information and evidence you need to solve this crime. There's puzzles, clues, and mind games that will connect you to the correct criminal. Explore the world of corruption with friends, or play solo and use our customizable detectives. But do you have what it takes to convict the right robber? Or will you leave this game with a cold game?
Thank you, any questions?
And I just loved also the things that Ms. Pravate didn't explicitly teach, such as like, the speaker skills, the use of the multimedia, and also that they all dressed up. That was so cute. And even the ones that wore hooded sweatshirts, that's also how entrepreneurs dress. So it was all really perfectly on theme. All of this is possible because of the intensive professional development and coaching for both teachers and administrators. These experiences kick off in the summer and then are woven throughout the school year. These costs are reflected in this year's proposed budget. And we so appreciate the support of the board and the superintendent in this work because the shifts we've seen in classrooms are really exciting and mobilizing. And I'll conclude with some voices from students. Here, we have students in Ms. Vincenzi's ELA class sharing their reactions to studying conflict in Romeo and Juliet through this project-based model. You'll hear the refrains of authenticity, that they're making connections to modern life, rigor, it's that the conflicts go far beyond Montague versus Capulet, and relevant work products, the short moral plays that they create as a work product.
Yes, so over the past few weeks, we have been reading the play Romeo and Juliet by William Shakespeare. After every act, we come together as a class and analyze and explain the conflict, characters, modern-day conflict, and literary devices. This helps us get a better understanding of the play.
Yes, I think this is different from other units that we did. We've been doing a lot of projects, and that's much different. And it's more like, interactive, I feel.
Um, we did this text message project where we translated the Old English from the balcony scene in Romeo and Juliet to modern-day slang, if you would. And I think that better helped me understand. I think it helped me relate to the book more by being able to see it in a way that I'm used to seeing real-life texts. It helped me understand the issues that they went through through, in Romeo and Juliet's time, to the issues I go through now.
Yeah, some examples of issues that they went through were like, overthinking, anxiety, love, and judgment of others. And I feel like a lot of kids our age can relate to those issues, so it's very helpful to like, see that in this book.
This one is, so we wrote our own play based on the conflicts in Romeo and Juliet. So for example, this one is Trust Your Instincts, and this one is Peer Pressure, which are very big conflicts today. And in the, in the project, we did positive outcomes instead of negative outcomes that were in the play.
Yeah, I think it helped me realize how to solve problems in a way that's more constructive than, you know, the way that they solve them in the book.
Yeah, the peer pressure from the play was kind of from like, the people around them, and like, they wanted them to act a certain way and be a certain way. And Romeo and Juliet kind of like, went against like, their family and their friends. And that's where the conflicts like, came from.
Um, one example of a real-life conflict in Romeo and Juliet is peer pressure. Romeo is being pressured to go to a party that he doesn't feel comfortable at. I wrote my story about peer pressure because I feel like that's a conflict that people still go through today, and it's very common.
I agree. Also, I wrote my story, Friendship is for Life, about Romeo's oppression. And I feel like it's very important that it was spoken on because a lot of kids like our age go through this.
In addition, he was being made fun of because he was depressed over Rosaline, his obsession for her, which is also a very common thing that's happening right now to children our age.
I think it really helped me better understand it and helped me relate it to real life, and I think that helped a lot throughout the unit.
And so while you heard a lot tonight about those three specific areas, there's a lot of work going on in all the departments, whether it's cohesion and articulation in our math or music department, reviewing the new frameworks and assessments in our social studies department, the use of iReady for progress monitoring in the middle school, or the early stages of development of these exciting new electives that we have the potential to add with this new budget, we seize the opportunity to reflect and to continuously improve. I'm now pleased to pass the mic to my colleague, Dr. Sweeney.
So to accomplish the delivery of special education programs and services in the least restrictive environment, the district offers a full continuum of programs and supports where an IEP can be implemented. It ranges from the less restrictive, for example, the general education class with monitoring services, to more restrictive service settings, such as special class. Services are generally portable, and special education is delivered to the student to enable them to access FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education, within their LRA, we love our acronyms, least restrictive environment, to the maximum extent possible. For next year, we are anticipating that our rising 6th grade students will need the smaller classes for English, math, and social studies. In addition, we will need to have a special class for English and math for 7th graders. They are currently in that environment now and flourishing. This is to ensure that our students are provided a program that truly meets their individual and unique needs. Next year, at the high school, we are looking to provide special education teacher support for statistics and mathematics, and daily consultant special ed teacher support for geometry regions. We want to ensure that our students receiving special education benefits, that they benefit from a robust educational experience. Our teachers in our middle school and high school life skills classes continue to work collaboratively and diligently. High school students are entered back into the community for worked-based learning opportunities, and they're at job sites such as Spring Hill Suites, Tucked Away, Fresh Market, Stop &amp; Shop, and at Cottle Elementary School. The school-based enterprise Tiger Bait Bites became fully operational again. They worked hard to prepare some treats for all of you tonight. Go get that. Coming, coming. Okay, excellent, excellent. And we have a donation jar because we like to support our students continuing to buy products to practice those vocational skills. Okay. We have chocolate chip cookies and tiger treats. Teachers collaborated more intensely this year. Thanks, thanks to COVID lifting and the opportunity for students to have face-to-face more often, we saw our students being included with their typical peers more often for project-based learning, and we also discovered a few had some amazing talents in music, which was really fabulous. For our graduating seniors, we are anticipating that all students with IEPs are going to graduate with a Regents High School diploma this year. And we do have one student exiting our life skills program, and he'll receive the SAC, the Skills and Achievement Commencement credential. In addition, we have solidified our Pioneer League team and participated in several sports, and we started a few new school-based enterprises. You'll see here, we have Tiger Prints. The students take orders from teachers at Cottle to make photocopies, and then they have to count, and they have to copy, and they have to collate and alphabetize and give them to the teachers. In addition, we just purchased a laminating machine with, a family had donated some money to our program on behalf of their son. So now we are able to laminate for teachers all real-life vocational preparedness for our students. We also launched Tiger Bubbles, where the students reach out to the coaches of the teams and at the conclusion of the season, they put it in order to have their uniforms washed and folded, and our students take the lead with that as well. One great, oh, go back one second. One great thing we also did was during the holidays, you'll see up there some examples. Our students worked with our art teacher, Ms. Pravet, who was just on the slide before, to draw and color in holiday cards. The faculty then got to choose a design, choose an individual message which the students had to type out and paste, and send holiday cards to each other in the building to celebrate. So having the special classes at the middle school and the high school not only serves our community well by offering a full continuum of support for our students in their own district, but also allows us to be in a position to support students from surrounding districts who may not have these programs. We have moved intensive needs classes to our secondary level as students have aged out of the elementary school, and now provide high-quality in-district programs for students with more severe needs that have graduated from Cottle and are now at our middle school. If our district has at least three students with similar needs within the same age range, it has proven to be more cost-effective to establish an in-house program than to place the students in an out-of-district program. The most important added benefit is that we get to have staff here with the right skills and training, and our students can go to school with their siblings and peers instead of in an out-of-district program. As Ms. Starks presented in a previous budget presentation, the tuition adds to our district's revenue and helps to support our goals. So in 2021 and 22, we accepted eight new special education students from out-of-district into our district programs. And so far this year, we have accepted five new out-of-district special education students into our programs, helping to mitigate the impact of non-resident students that have either graduated, aged out, or have moved. 61% of the new students accepted in the past two years have been at our elementary school level, and we hope to continue to support them through middle school and high school as out-of-district students. I now turn to Mr. Colasuno to discuss our outstanding sports and extracurricular activities.
Thank you, Dr. Sweeney. Good evening, everybody. So I will be celebrating our champions, and this year, we so far have quite a few champions. So I'd like to begin by recognizing our fall sports teams. So the first bullet up there really shows the connection between the academic environment and athletics. So each of our fall varsity athletic teams were awarded the Scholar-Athlete Team Award by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. To receive Scholar-Athlete Team recognition, the team's average GPA for 75% of the roster must be greater than or equal to 90%, and every single one of our varsity teams achieved that honor. Further, we had numerous teams achieve multiple championships. So up on the board, you could see our varsity football team was crowned section champions. Our varsity girls' cross-country team, in their second year of existence, were crowned section champions. And our varsity girls' soccer team was named runners-up in the section finals. We also had numerous teams make deep playoff runs, so our girls' cross-country team was named league champions, our girls' soccer team, and our girls' volleyball team was named co-league champions this year. We also had two coaches from our fall sports season named Coach of the Year. So our football coach, John DiArco, and our girls' soccer coach, Stephanie Martino, were both awarded that honor. We had a student named to the Golden Dozen Team, which is a huge accomplishment that I don't think I remember seeing my entire time here at Tuckahoe. But our Tuckahoe High School football standout, John Benke, was named to the Golden Dozen by the Westchester chapter of the National Football Foundation and Hall of Fame. This honor only goes to 12 of the region's top football scholar athletes, so that's a huge accomplishment. Lastly, we had numerous other nominations for Low-Hud Player of the Week. We had, in the fall season, 8th grader Brooke Matarazzo, who actually won that award. And it was really cool having a middle, middle school student, you know, voted into that category. For the winter season, I just received today that, same as the fall, all of our winter varsity athletic teams received Scholar-Athlete Team Awards by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, again with the same criteria as mentioned before. Our winter season also saw some deep playoff runs. Our varsity girls' basketball team, for the second year in a row, were named section champions. Our varsity boys' basketball team were named runners-up. They lost up at the county center, but had a great season. And lastly, our varsity cheerleading team went down to Disney and really represented Tuckahoe well, coming eighth in the nation versus over 100 other schools, and then came back and competed in sectionals. They also received runners-up. We had our new girls' basketball coach, Silvio DeSalvatore, who was named Coach of the Year for Conference III. We had Sophia Colasacco, who earned Low-Hud Player of the Week for actually the last week of the season, who performed incredibly up at the county center. And we also, in our first year of our merger with Eastchester for their wrestling program, we had junior Kai Sheffield, who was selected to be one of the top wrestlers to compete in the Northeast Tournament up at Sullivan Community College, and only the top wrestlers in the section earned bid. So that was, that was big. As far as our spring season goes, the weather did not cooperate with us today, but we did get some time indoors, so our varsity and JV sports began today. We got all of our practices in, you know, out, we came indoors for most of them. And our modified season will begin on March 27th. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Next, we have the opportunity to celebrate our scholars. So we, we've selected a few of our activities and clubs here at the school. So we'll begin with Science Olympiad. So our middle school Science Olympiad team participated recently in the Lower Hudson Valley Division B Tournament at Scarsdale Middle School. This consisted of 20 different events and 30 competing teams. Our, we were broken up into two teams, and they both outranked numerous, numerous other teams from across Westchester County. And our teams medaled in seven different categories of events, and our advisors mentioned that it was extremely competitive this year, so that's a huge honor. We had 41 middle school students compete on our team this year. Our high school Science Olympiad team also competed. They achieved six individual medals in their competition, and they were awarded in the areas of science, such as anatomy and physiology, cell biology, and chemistry lab. We want to congratulate all of our Science Olympiad students on a job well done. Next up, our debate team. So we had the honor of hosting our first-ever tournament here in Tuckahoe. So on January 21st, TMS hosted New York, the New York region's top debate teams from all over the county, all over New York State. So we had actually over 150 competitors here, and it really showed a wide collaborative effort between our custodial staff, our security team, our administrators and teachers. And it was really a great tournament. Our students all were awarded different prizes and awards, so it was a great tournament. Next is NISMA, which is our high school and middle school chorus. So they participated in a NISMA festival over at Scarsdale High School. We had over 30 students who prepared solos, and they were performed beautifully, which were featured on our Facebook page. Next up, our National Honor Society. So we have our National Junior Honor Society, as well as our National Honor Society. So our National Junior Honor Society has participated in two fundraisers this year. The first one, they collected character Band-Aids for the Maria Ferrera Children's Hospital. And most recently, they collected toiletries, diapers, and other items for the Ronald McDonald House in Valhalla. Our National Honor Society has had a great partnership with ECAP, the Eastchester Community Action Partnership Organization. So this year, they participated in the Thanksgiving Food Drive in November, and they also supported the Holiday Drive in December by wrapping gifts that were collected here at the school. Lastly, our Habitat for Humanity is arguably our most popular organization here at the school. We have 50 active members in that club, and they've participated in four builds so far this year, two in Mamaronek and two in Mount Vernon. And they also participated in a walk-around for their sponsor, the Fuller Center, in, in November. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Linehan, who will discuss our wonderful school performances.
Thank you, Mr. Colasuno. We're celebrating our artists. We celebrate the ways our Tuckahoe education has allowed our artists to refine and hone their crafts. In the visual arts, with the gorgeous self-portraits like the ones you see displayed here, there are, obviously, they're displayed outside, too. Please take a look as you go through the lobby of middle school and high school. There'll be an upcoming art show in May. Our winter and spring concerts for our choral, band, and string students showcase the talent and learning of our students. A moving performance by our NISMA students, all county and all state students, are well documented. A moving performance by NISMIA students, all county and all state students are well documented. And of course, we were all treated this weekend to an exceptional performance by our students and their advisors in a wonderful performance of Beauty and the Beast. At this time, we'll give you the final showing.
The thing about Pitt is the interactions you have with other people. I probably wouldn't have got to know and I get to know them better through Pitt and it makes a lot of different connections that I could later intertwine in my academic career. Oh yeah, it's, it's like a whole new experience for me, at least point. You have to follow the singers and stuff like that and it's really nice, it's a really nice feeling when you finally get that connectedness that you were really looking for. Favorite experience? It was definitely during the scene, like the huge numbers like such as Gaston, Belle, Be Our Guest, Mob Song, that were just very magical for me and creating good music.
Restless, don't believe me? Ask the dishes, they can sing, they can dance, after all this, this is truth. And all the years that were something bad. No point anymore if I can't love her.
I would say it was completely eye-opening. Just a different mentality, a different world that just really took advantage of everything that it had access to, I think. And really just not limiting any potential, you know, really getting the best of everyone, a positive environment, a place where you can come and you see people singing and not afraid to express themselves and just a wonderful place. And just really stepping onto a different plane of existence and pretending like you are somebody else and exhibiting just a part of you that you never knew existed. And I think it was the most adrenaline-filling, exciting experience of my life, experience. And I think you rely on everybody, you know, your line sets off, their line sets off your line, which is going to set up a queue for the crew, which sets off the pit, you know, everybody is, you know, entangled and I think that is really what a team is, relying on your, the guy next to you or the girl next to you to make you look better. You need, you need one another, you cannot do it alone. And I think it really emphasized, emphasized that, like looking at people, you could tell they were nervous, but like, we're going to do it together, like we're all going out there together to put on a show. And it's like, I've never felt so alive in my entire life and I think that was the best
Tech Crew really like opened my eyes and it taught me like so many fascinating and wonderful things about what it's like to be kind of, I guess, like behind the scenes. And you know, I really admire the work ethic of like everyone else in Tech Crew because there are so many little pieces that have to come together in order for everything to be like, for everything to run smoothly to watch. And I was just moving the spotlight, but I know that like people like Bea are like doing like everything to ensure that costume changes run smoothly, that props are in place. You know, it was a really magical experience and I'm someone who really likes to be alone. And so being in such a cooperative environment was like really eye-opening for me and I, you know, I'm glad that I was able to end my senior year doing something so incredible.
So I've done seven shows here at Tuckahoe. I just auditioned with a group of middle schoolers because I was too scared to do anything and it was one of the best decisions of my life. When I was younger, I did not like to like talk to anybody. And when I have to like just talk to people that I don't know, like when I'm forced to, you just kind of like turn on a switch and it's like you're performing and you can still be yourself, but it's an extension of yourself. It's not really like just you. You're just like, I have gone, gained so much confidence doing this. But this year, you just got to have like fun on stage and like I got to make jokes and just like be witty and sarcastic and Cogsworth is like an extension of myself. He's like my personality times like a thousand. And then with the cast, it's, you spend so much time together rehearsing and running lines and just like hanging out in between scenes and just, and when you're on stage, it's like a connection that you would never really have with anybody else. And it's all these unlikely people just coming together and being a family. The connection just like, it doesn't, it will never go away and I'll never forget anything that's ever happened to me.
Searching at the sun, writing in the hills, till I find the sign, sun has all that shine, here's the end of it. Till I find the sign, sun has all that shine, here's the end of it.
I think the excellence in a life beneficial experience speaks for itself.